Evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome to the Town of Air Select Board meeting for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, the Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. We could all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any changes to the agenda as presented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, under my report, under appointments, I do have two appointments for the Cultural Council.
Okay. Any other changes?
No.
Chris, any changes?
No.
I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to accept and approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Agenda is approved. No announcements this evening?
Nope.
Okay.
Wait.
Oh, yes, please.
Just thought of it.
Yeah.
September 13th at the Peroni Park is ET.
Oh, yes, movie night.
Yes, it's movie night.
Seven, around seven, right?
It's 7:00, 7:30. Yeah, just for summer, it's just.
Grab your chair, grab your blanket, and be there. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, is anybody here or online on Zoom for public input? Carly, can we get that TV on?
Oh, God. Sorry. No, I don't see anybody.
All right. Not seeing anybody? Move on to, um, move on to our opening of the public hearing. Janice?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just didn't point out it's only 5:03.
Oh, we need three minutes. Okay, no problem.
Sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, we still have two minutes.
Two minutes.
So, yeah, I think everybody should go see ET if you've never seen it.
And they should bring cans with them.
Bring cans? Bring cans?
They're collecting, yeah.
And bring cans, they're collecting cans. Empty cans? What kind of cans? Let's make sure we say this, food cans, all right.
I'm glad she asked.
Right? They kind of left it open, didn't it? Okay.
Food pantry food.
All right.
Okay, for anybody watching.
So, on September 13th, go down to Peroni Park about 7:00, 7:30 PM, bring some canned food to help out with the food pantry, and see the wonderful movie of ET. Please bring Kleenex. ET phone home. It's 5:04.
It's a good time for later for that one, isn't it?
Forty seconds.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, with those forty seconds?
Sure.
Through you, just a reminder that the Newton Street Festival will be on Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and any interested vendors, vendor applications are due Friday, September 13th.
All right. Good day, ET.
All right.
And a food drink.
I'll start reading those because by the time I'm done, we should be okay.
You good with that, Carly?
Here we go.
Okay.
Four, five seconds.
All right. Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will conduct an in-person and remote public hearing on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, at 5:05 PM at the Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, regarding an application for transfer of license of current general law, Chapter 38, Section 12, all alcohol beverages restaurant from Page Moore Cafe Incorporated, DBA Billiards Cafe, to C. Jonathan Moore. What is the DBA?
Doing Business As.
Doing Business As, Billiards Cafe, 39 Main Street, Air Mass. For Zoom call-in information, please contact atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100. The name of the applicant is C. Jonathan Moore, Doing Businesses, Billiards Cafe, 39 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, 5:05 PM. Remote participation meeting held on Zoom, Zoom ID 897-80900793.
Great, thank you. Any questions from either the board members about this transfer?
No. I mean, it's for a sad occasion.
Yes.
And I just want to point out, I'd like to send my condolences to the Moore family on the loss of Calvin on that. That would be my only comment.
Okay.
Yes, I echo those sentiments.
And so, Mr. Chair, just for the record, the license transfer application is just changing things in the background. It's still going to be Billiards Cafe, operated how it's always been operated. The operations will be transferred to Calvin's son, CJ. We've reviewed it with all department heads. There was no, um, no issues, so we're recommending it be approved. Mr. Moore couldn't make it this evening. He's out of state traveling.
Okay. Then I have no questions. Just the same sentiment as my other board members. Sorry for CJ's loss.
All right.
I'll take a motion then.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Select Board approve the all alcohol beverage restaurants application to be changed to C. Jonathan Moore, as presented in the packet.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. And it's approved. And take a motion to close the public hearing, right?
Yep. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. All right. Moving on, presentation of proposed inclusionary housing zoning bylaw, an MBTA zoning bylaw, by our Town Planner. Hello, Danny, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just while they're teeing that up, just to frame just the introduction, both of these items that Danny is going to present on this evening will be articles on the Fall Town Meeting warrant. This is an informational presentation for tonight. The Planning Board will have the public hearing.
On September 10th.
On September 10th, and the public, and the Planning Board through the Town Planner at Town Meeting will also report on this as well. So just to frame, this is the beginning of the process on these two.
All right.
Turn it over to Danny.
For everyone, I'm Danny Ruiz, I'm the Town Planner. So just a quick recap, the working group that presented to the Select Board for the Fall Town Meeting, the zoning amendments, that working group is still currently working on creating some affordable housing, on ways to increase affordable housing in the Town of Air. And this inclusionary housing bylaw is, came out of that working group. The MBTA zoning is partially kind of tied to that, but that's something that comes from the state that we need to get enacted by the end of this year to be in compliance with the state law. So the current bylaw that we have for inclusionary housing right now has been enacted since, I believe, 2017, and it was drafted five years prior to that. So it's been, it's been written for quite a long time and hasn't been used that entire time. So what I, what this working group had proposed was looking at a new type of bylaw that would help actually create more affordable housing and actually be triggered on potential projects that would come forth before the Planning Board. And the bylaw that I'm going to go through with you guys is the, MHP uses them, uses this template. It comes from Salisbury. It's a town that I previously worked in, and I've seen it work, and it's been working for quite a few years over there. Works very well. But MHP uses it as their template for other towns, so we're using that one as our template as well. All right. So the applicability for this project, the current one that we have right now only speaks about multifamily, if you have five or more multifamily dwellings on a property. That makes projects, it make it, makes it difficult for certain projects because our definition of what multifamily is, is very specific. So what, the way we changed it, there's, there's three different triggers for it. The main reason, the main thing is going to be the net increase of five or more dwelling units. And there's going to be three different types of how it would trigger. So the first one would be any residential development or mixed-use development in a single structure or multiple structures, resulting in a net increase of five or more dwelling units on any parcel, contiguous parcels comprising of proposed development. And so what that basically says is, if you have a project that is residential mixed-use has more than five dwelling units, and that's the difference here, we specifically use the trigger of five or more dwelling units because mixed, so multifamily has the definition of more than three units in a building, whereas in this could trigger on single duplexes and triplexes and, you know, going up more on a net increase of five or more. So it's for really bigger projects, not for smaller projects, like if someone wants to convert a single-family house into a three-bedroom, a three-unit house. It's kind of the reasoning to avoid not triggering those so that the smaller developer or, you know, town resident, it's not hindering that. The, so finding, the second one would be a finding or special permit over variance from the zoning board of appeals or planning board that results in, again, a net increase of five or more dwelling units, whether by new construction or alteration, expansion, reconstruction, or change of existing residential or non-residential structures or space, whether on one or more contiguous parcels comprising a proposed development site. So on this one, that would trigger on the firehouse. So as an example, if, if that project had, would come after this would be enacted, that project would trigger the inclusionary housing bylaw because they would be increasing to five units there, and it's a conversion from the old firehouse to a new residential use. And then the third one would be any division of land, including and not limited to the divisions, as a result of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81K to 81G, as well as 81P. And so on that is subdivisions and A&R lots. So a specific example would be on Shaker Road, the Aho Project, the development, there were nine units there. On that, it would have triggered at least one of them would have been affordable. And so our current bylaw requires 20% of affordable housing, and during the MBTA zoning, some of the CP, CPTC courses that we've been taking, the state had talked about the requirement, if you have higher than 10%, you are required to do a feasibility study to see, as part of the MBTA zoning, to see if the 10%, your 20% or 15% or whatever your number is above that 10% is a, how it affects development. And so what we had decided was, we noticed that 20% was much higher than I'd seen in most towns, and 10% is what the state requires. So what we had talked about was going to the 10%, what the state would require, we would not have to do a feasibility study for the MBTA zoning, and it will at least get us to be in compliance for the state law and as well as still get affordable housing. And so on this one, also, the way it would work is fractions of .5 or more would be rounded up to the next whole number, and then fractions of .5 or less would be rounded down. So the, on how affordable units can be provided for the project, there's going to be several types of ways that you could do it, but the main way is onsite units. So we, we provided a trigger in here of, if you have fewer than 19 units, you're not required to do that onsite unit. You can do a payment in lieu, which I'll get to later on. And if you have more than 20 units, or 20 or more, you would be required to do that. And this was what the, so when we were going through this, the working group felt that this would help the smaller developers not, who don't have the experience with dealing with SHI units and affordable housing and having to do with all the legal portion of that, because there is a bit, quite a bit that goes with that. This would also, so it would help them not have to be burdened with the additional costs on that for the development. But the developers that are typically, you know, building more than 20 units have that experience because in most towns, the triggers are right around this number, and they have that experience with inclusionary housing. They know that the affordable housing component is already in part of it. They have the, you know, the infrastructure to help them get through that and the experience. And then one of the big things on this one also would be the onsite affordable rental units would be required. So if, for example, the DMG project had that gone through, they would have been required to provide the 10% onsite because that would have been their rental units, whereas in market rate, that's where it kind of differs. You could do the onsite or the payment in lieu. And then also, there's a combination that you can do for, if you don't want to do just the onsite, as working with the Planning Board or the ZBA, depending on who is the permit granting authority at that point. The, they would work with the Affordable Housing Trust and Affordable Housing Committee, and they would either do a combination of onsite, payment in lieu, or offsite. We allow for the offsite units because it's, it's a rare occasion in which you actually see this. It is allowed by the state law to do offsite units. You don't typically see it because the landowner has to have additional land somewhere to give, to be able to do those units offsite, and they have to work with the Affordable Housing Trust to really work on the agreement. They would still have to look similar to what is within the development as, you know, that state law. You can't make the affordable units look any different than what's currently being built. Or, so that is kind of just in there so that if there is a rare occasion, like the, the multi-project in Groton, on Westford Road, there is nine units, I believe, in that little, there's a parcel over there, in which they did offsite units as part of their project. So there are rare occasions where it works. Typically, you just don't see it. Typically, what you see is developers going for the onsite or the payment in lieu. And this is the breakdown that we have for the payment in lieu. And we did some different stages to try to incentivize keeping the prices down. So the way it would work is if, if a market rate unit, if you choose not to do the onsite affordable unit, you're going to pay a contribution for every market rate unit you sell. So, and that goes to your, to the trust, which then they'll be able to use for later on for other projects. So if you're $400,000 or less, it's a flat fee of $10,000 for each unit. If it's between $400,000 and $600,000, it's 2.5% of the market sale price, and I provided some examples so that you could see what that contribution would be. So at $500,000, it's $12,500, and at $600,000, it's $15,000. And then as you step up to $600,000 to $800,000, it's 3% of the market sale price. And then the examples on the right is $21,000 and $24,000. And then for $800,000 or more, it's 3.5%. And you can see on the right, it says for $900,000, it's 31.5, and for a million, it's 35. And so what this does builds in kind of a structure to incentivize developers that even if they're going to do market rate, choose the payment in lieu to try to keep their, the sale price lower so that the, the contribution isn't as high. So it's kind of, it kind of helps big A affordable and little A affordable, just, it's kind of a way to try to combat the, you know, the high prices of, of it. Because we as a, you know, as a town can't, you know, control the market, but we can try to incentivize. And so for, in a way that we're also doing to try to help the developer in, to, because it's a give and take to, to provide the affordable units, we'll also help them with a density bonus, which is additional market rate units to try to offset the cost of the affordable housing. Because it does still cost the same to build the unit, and they are selling it at a lower price. So the market rate, the bonus units would help offset some of that cost. So, and an example here would be if a project comes in with 10 units, they would have to provide one affordable unit. If the developer chooses to do, to give us two additional units, they would get an additional six market rate units for a total of 18 units on the development. So it, it helps offset those costs, and it also helps us get more affordable units, so they can provide them onsite, so we get three out of that as opposed to the one. Do we want to do any questions or? No, okay. This next section is, section 2.0, which is the definitions. These are additional definitions that'll need to go into, that'll be updated as part of the inclusionary housing bylaw. So for the affordable housing, we would just be changing the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. They're no longer called that. They're called the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So that'd be the new, new name that would go in. And then the Air Affordable Housing Trust, this would be a definition that would just go into, into the bylaw so that we know exactly how, what it is. This is in a different location, but it's not in our definition, so we felt that it would be good to have that in there because it is going to be referenced within that bylaw.
And Mr. Chair, just as the board is aware, this will be a separate article, just because it's the definition section, so there'll be a, there'll be an article for what Mr. Ruiz presented for the inclusionary, and then there'll be an article for the definitions.
Yep. And then, so the next, the next section is the MBTA multifamily overlay district. And this is to be, so that we would be in compliance with the Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, the zoning, the zoning act that they just put in for the livable communities. Since we are a, a, what's the, what am I trying to say? The, a community, an MBTA community. Couldn't get it out. We are an MBTA community. We have to have it in by the end of this year. In early March of last year, the town did receive interim compliance, so they did receive, the town did receive a letter from the state saying that all of the zones, the zoning and everything that we have met all of the requirements. From there, there were some additional changes that came from that, which were the feasibility study and the requirement of the, you know, having 10% if you have more or not, and the requirement of you cannot require special permits within this bylaw. And the reasoning behind that is, the state feels that towns across Massachusetts have been using special permits as a cudgel to, you know, knock down projects and deny them because it gives the, those boards so much leeway, because it's a four-to-one supermajority. And special permits always have kind of open-ended criterias, which are very subjective. So the state felt that not requiring special permits would help projects be a little bit more streamlined for multifamily. And this-
We're allowing the state to be in charge because that's worked for us so well.
Yeah, and so I understand where you're coming from on that. But what we, we as, so myself, the Planning Board members, and Alicia have done is they allow us to build in a lot of those requirements that we have for special permits within the actual bylaw, just not required as a special permit. So like the aquifer protection, our flood plain, all of those kind of special permits, we've already built those requirements into the actual bylaw, so they'll still have to submit all the information that we need. We just, it's not a special permit. So the, so we need to have this in by the end of this year, and our two zones that we're going to be having for the MBTA is going to be the West Air Village, which is down on West Main Street, and the Downtown Park Street. So it's going to be the two Form Based Codes. Those two zones meet all of the requirements that we need, which is 15 units per acre, so we're all set with all those units, all those requirements for density. We will, this is going to have its own review process. It's going to be called the MOD Development Approval Process. It's not like Site Plan Review. It's kind of like Site Plan Review, but not as, as hard as I would say. It's, there's, we can only review certain things. We're not allowed to review everything. We have a kind of a narrow scope as to what we're allowed to review, and we've already built that into the bylaw and added additional, some of the stuff that we wanted from Site Plan Review, we have built that into this bylaw, and Town Council's actually reviewing this right now. We are using, we use the template that Town Council had provide us from Medway, and so we've, we've taken that bylaw and that template and adjusted it for us. So, oh, yep.
So just kind of a recommendation for your public hearing, and maybe you were already thinking about this way. So you're saying that what this would be doing is everything that would be on a Site Plan Review, it just wouldn't be listed because it's already incorporated in the bylaw, right? Is that you have like a clear fact sheet of like, this is what a Site Plan Review would be, and look, those words are in this. So that there's this, you know, it's not just lost in this and you speaking, but it's a, they're literally, see, we have this, and it's literally written into this, so that somebody can pick up that one sheet and go, oh, okay. Because sometimes when somebody's talking, we all do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all go, what?
Yeah, so you're right. I can provide like a little pamphlet showing that section that's-
Right, just to kind of like, so that everybody realizes that, you know, yeah, all of it's going to be covered.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that. And this is the zoning map that's going to be updated as part of the overlay. So we're creating a new overlay just over the downtown air, I mean, the Downtown Park Street and the West Air. It's gonna, it's that red dashed line now. And so the way it works is the underlying zoning still exists. This is just something that hovers above it as a different type of application. So you would either apply under the Form Based Code or under this section. So, and for this one would be multifamily is what's the application. And so what this does, so this bylaw makes it so that there is its own application process specifically for multifamily and mixed-use development that are located within the MBTA overlay district. And so we added in mixed-use because that's a new thing that actually just recently came up, that that would also be part of the MBTA zoning. We talked about the development plan approval. The special permits cannot be required under this section. So some of the special, and this is where I talk about some of the requirements that we've already put into it. So affordable housing, off-street parking, which we currently deal with under Site Plan Review. Other overlay districts would also be applicable, the requirements for them, and site development standards. So the site development standards is where a lot of the site plan review requirements would be coming into play. This bylaw provides a more expeditious process for multifamily housing to try to combat housing shortages, shortages in Massachusetts is dealing with. So, and just remember that, I know there's been a lot of towns that have been fighting this because they assume just because we provided this zoning, we're going to have 1,000 units because our requirement is, I believe, 750 units should be able to be built in these zones. There's not necessarily going to be built 750 units, 750 dwelling units. When you look at the land, the, you know, what, what the constraints are and all that, when you apply that and also the time period it would take to get a full buildup, you wouldn't see this that quickly. It would take 10, 15, maybe 20 years for us to even get to maybe 50, 60% at most of what that requirement is or what is allowed. I don't think we'd ever hit that 750. We just don't have the land, the size of those parcels just don't, don't meet that.
So people aren't like hovering at the gate waiting?
Like to build 750 units.
Rush in, you know?
No, so it's funny, we did, so at CPTC in March, they, they had the state come in with a, a guy who did, he had this analysis that he did in, I believe it was Arlington. And he looked at all the parcels, what the costs were, and put it all into like a model and showed that even if you, like allowing for 1,000 units over a 10, 15-year period, you're only building, they said, at almost like 500 to 600 units. So yes, we're allowing it, but it's not necessarily meaning it's going to get built. So compliance for this, we need to have this voted on and enacted by December 31st of this year. And the big thing with this one is we're not allowed to state, to apply for state funding grants if we're not in compliance, like the Mass Work Grant that we got for West Main Street and the CDVG grant that we get to, that we help with us for seniors. Those would be not, we wouldn't be allowed to submit for those anymore until we were in compliance. So that's one of the, one of the other things that we need to make sure we're in compliance with them.
Put that in big bold letters, in red.
Yes, I will.
You know, if we don't approve this, this is what we lose.
Yeah, and, and, and we do receive a lot of those grants, you know. We've, we've applied for quite a bit of them. And we just got, I mean, we recently got one for the Downtown Park Street, you know, that we were using to look at. And as well as they're doing the intersection down the street, which is through Mass DOT, but that's state funding, so it's like, we would lose all the opportunities that we have there. And that's it. Any questions?
Um, I, good job.
Yes.
I do recommend those little tweaks.
Yes.
So whatever question you think no one will ask, that's the question someone's going to ask.
Yes.
Okay, I guarantee it. So you want to be prepared that. But if I could just segue just a little bit, because we're talking about, you know, affordable housing and everything. Do we know about whether or not the, it got passed as far as what Governor wanted to do in Devon's regarding increasing the affordable housing?
That, excuse me, the economic development bill is still stuck.
It's still stuck, okay, all right.
Ending, yep.
Okay. No, thank you, I just-
Yeah, that was a good question.
Place the segue to it, because, yeah. Because that, if they do something out there, that'll also impact us here, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions? No.
All right.
Great, thank you, Danny.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
When's the public hearing?
September 10th.
September 10th.
And actually, so I actually presented to the Affordable Housing Committee and the Trusts last Wednesday. And I've given the, a couple of the, you know, highlights to the planning board in the past couple of planning board meetings. But we will be opening the public hearing on Tuesday. We don't necessarily aren't going to vote, I don't know if we are or not. But we, we also have September 24th as another meeting that we could-
So it's during the normal planning board meetings?
Yes, yes, it is.
So September 10th and the 24th, you say?
Yes.
At 6:00 PM?
Uh, yeah, 6:15 we start.
6:15, okay.
Yes.
All right, so now people know. I didn't know about the 6:15.
Yes, all right.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on, we have our director's report for the Department of Public Works. Matt, in the role of Dan tonight.
And Mr. Chair, Kimberly Abraham-Lawter, superintendent on Zoom, and the town engineer is here.
Good evening.
Hello, Kimberly.
Yes, so the DPW has just two items on tonight's agenda. First item is a petition for street acceptance of Shaker Pond Road. So the petition was submitted by the developer of the Shaker Mill Pond subdivision. That's Mr. Daniel Aho. So he's requesting that the road be considered for acceptance at the Fall Town Meeting. So the road was constructed at town standards for a public way. Myself and the director both inspected the road. Just a couple of really small items that need to be cleaned up, but that should all be taken care of before the Fall Town Meeting. So the street acceptance process, it's a multi-step process. So tonight is really just the first step. So that is the select board voting on intention to lay out the road as a public way. So that's a request tonight. And obviously DPW are recommending that the select board vote their intention to lay out the road as a public way.
Any questions? Chris, any questions?
Nope.
Nope, okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the select board, what did, what was the word, did you run it?
Vote intention.
The select board vote to, the intention for street acceptance of the Shaker Hills Mill Pond subdivision, Shaker Pond Road.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Motion's approved.
The other item on tonight's agenda from DPW is a project at the Spectacle Pond Water Treatment Plant. So the DPW opened bids last month. This is a bid to replace carbon that filters out PFAS in drinking water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's very important. It's important for compliance. The bid opening wasn't as favorable as we hoped. We have $100,000 appropriated toward the project. And the low responses, the responsible bid for the project was $164,400. So that's a $64,000, $64,400 funding gap. So DPW looked at any sort of possible funding transfers appropriate toward this project, but there were no viable alternatives or options to, to do so. So DPW is recommending, it's like we're authorized up to 75,000 in UDAG funds. So that 75,000 would cover any possible contingencies for the project as well.
What, what does the, or where, or how they dispose of the carbon once it's, you know, absorbed with all the PFAS? I mean, is that a process?
I think Kimberly might be able to expand on that. She's a water treatment expert.
I can answer that question. Part of the, the contract is that the contractor who takes the carbon away properly disposes it, disposes of it with state federal, within state federal regulations. So we kind of leave it to them. So my understanding is that it is landfillled. I could be wrong, but that's my understanding.
Interesting.
And it would be an appropriate landfill, that implies and whatnot.
Yeah, I, I just know because they always say this is forever material and it's, okay, you're removing it from one spot and then where does it go after it? And I also know, obviously it's going to be treated correctly, but I know there's a huge expense in that. And I didn't know if that's, was kind of part of why this was so expensive was, you know, the final resting place of this material. But, you know, just for my own information. Thank you.
Janice, any questions?
A quick question. What is our UDAG balance?
Just, so the current UDAG balance is just over 2.5 million and everything has been replenished to date.
Ooh, we got money.
So we would be respectfully looking for the board to authorize up to 75,000, subject to replenishment by a future town meeting. And historically and traditionally, that's the annual town meeting. We use available free cash to replenish it. So the UDAG fund is, is available in its fullest sense. Everything is replenished.
Cool.
I have no questions, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the use of up to $75,000 of UDAG funds to be replenished at a future town meeting for the replacement of the GAC media at the Spectacle Pond Water Treatment Plant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and the motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have our town manager's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. And hard to believe that Labor Day has come and gone and fall is upon us. In the packet, you have all of the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on August 20th. In terms of the administrative update, the last five weeks, as this board has been very intimately involved with, the focus has really been on the Noshoba Valley Medical Center and continues to be, and I'll have a little bit more on that later on to item number three on my report. Under the administrative matters, I want to thank the town clerk and the assistant town clerk and all of the election workers yesterday for a very successful election, as always, from that group. And they put a lot of effort and work into that, so onward and upward towards November. On August 21st, the DPW director and I had a very positive meeting with the business community regarding the proposed Stormwater Utility Fund. I was joined by the conservation agent and the town engineer, as well as Jonathan Krantz from the working group and the working group's consultant. The group is looking to come to the select board on September 17th to make a presentation on their recommendations for the Stormwater Utility Fund to be considered by town meeting on October 28th. But it was a very favorable meeting. There were a lot of good questions, a lot of clarifying questions, but a lot of support. It was different than it went 10 years ago, so that was encouraging. Also, on August 21st, I was joined by the senior center director and Mr. Ken Diskin, the vice chair of the Building Committee. And selectman Chris Tavaris joined us. And Dr. Petrasi presented the Groton Harvard Road site for the senior center. It overall was a positive meeting. There were some questions and concerns raised by a school committee about the future of the school campus site in terms of school use. However, since then, and I don't want to steal their thunder, but I know it is a matter of public record, on August 28th, the senior center site selection committee met to formally vote on the recommended site of, off of Bishop Road to be presented to the select board. They are planning to come to the select board on September 17th to make a formal presentation on their work and their formal recommendation for your consideration. In the meantime, we have begun to look at some due diligence on next steps. Next steps specific to the size and scope of this project will require it to be largely a borrow authorization, which will require not only town meeting, but a ballot for a debt exclusion. And we are just in the process of getting all of that information together. So on the 17th, in addition to the recommendation, we have all of the, of the facts and the steps that are, that are involved. So September 17th, they're looking to come to the board. An update on the 71 Sandy Pond planning process. As mentioned, we greatly appreciate the board's support of some Opera funding for consultant support. Going to recommend on September 17th, a working group to start on this process. I'm proposing a nine-member working group. The DPW director, Parks director, a Parks commission member, a representative from the Community Preservation Committee, the town planner, a planning board member, a conservation agent, and two residents. So it'd be a nine-member committee, of which six of the nine would be residents of air. This would just be a working group to start, just to begin to shape this. What I want to really stress that we've been talking about all along is that there will be several public planning meetings for input at a series of meetings. Because I think the DPW director said it best, that this is sort of like a blank canvas. So we want to get everybody's input, everybody's ideas and begin to, to shape that. Ultimately, what that will culminate into is a recommendation as to what to do next on that site, which is also going to require some funding considerations. And not to speak for the CPC, but the CPC, when they supported the land acquisition, did indicate, you know, to be determined some future CPC support in funding. And we'll look at some other opportunities, grant, town, and so forth. But looking to get that process going and off the ground and really promoting the, the public input piece of it. As I mentioned earlier, the Newton Street Festival, Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Deadline for vendor applications is Friday, September 13th. We're in the process of confirming the music performances and the food vendors. And we should have all of that confirmed by next week, you know, for promotion. And interested vendors should contact Samantha Benoit at the town hall, the building department. And we're also looking for volunteers for the day of the event. Volunteers are needed and welcome, so, and we want to bottle this weather today for that event. In the event, it's going to be a great day weather-wise, but the rain date is Sunday, October 6th.
Don't jinx us.
I'm not going to jinx us. That's why I bottled this. Almost done on the update. Fall town meeting update. Again, just reminding, Fall Town Meeting is on Monday, October 28th at 7:00 PM. The warrant deadline is 12:00 PM noon on Friday, September 27th. That's also the deadline for any citizens petitions to the town clerk. As of right now, there are nine potential articles. The Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund, which there'll be a presentation to this board on the 17th. You heard from Mr. Ruiz on the zoning bylaw amendment for MBTA zoning. The MB, bylaw amendment for inclusionary housing. Zoning bylaw update of the zoning map and the zoning bylaw update of the definitions. And as he presented tonight, that's sort of a cluster together. There's an article to rescind some prior year unissued borrow authorizations from the finance manager. These are previously completed projects that came in under, which is great, and it's more of a housekeeping. She also has another article, which she'll give more information to the board shortly, asking town meeting to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, which is called the prudent investment rule. It's a statute involving the investments in all of the trust funds. And I'll have her do a detailed memo and explain that much better than I can. But it's a positive thing more for the trusts. And then the supplemental funding for the assistant Parks director position, contingent on the certification of free cash, which is underway. And then the street acceptance that you heard tonight. So that's where we are now. I'll continue to keep the board updated on, on town meeting. FY26 budget preparations. So we talked about the FY26 budget calendar at the, at the last meeting, which the board has and is in the packet. Several of the budget-related committees are going to be meeting before the board meets again on September 17th. So we'll have their proposed schedules to integrate into the calendar. So no action on the budget calendar just yet, but looking to that for the end of September, beginning of October. The rate review committee is going to meet on September 10th at 4:00 PM. Their two initial agenda items are, one, ongoing review of the feasibility study for the transfer station and some of those recommendations, and to start the transfer station permit rate review process to start it. Also, we're in the process of reviewing all of the previous capital plans that had been submitted in projects in preparation for capital planning, which will start very shortly in, in October. October. Um, since July 26th, and unfortunately, we've been focusing on this even in more detail, because the reality of the, and I'm going to stress my word, the temporary closure of Neshova Valley Medical Center, the chiefs in town departments are actively developing needs and potential budgetary impacts regarding, uh, the temporary closure of Neshova Valley Medical Center. And I'm going to be meeting with all of the town departments on September 11th at the department head meeting to talk about this further. Um, this has serious implications, potentially, not only on the development of the FY26 budget, but even the budget we're in now, is we're already seeing, and it's difficult to quantify, but we're already seeing, um, potential negative impacts, um, from, from the closure in terms of, of potential costs. So, what I've asked all departments to do to the best of their ability, and I'll get this to the board, and we'll talk about it in more detail, is to begin to look at what these costs are and what these potential budgetary impacts are. And as we have continued to stress, both on the federal and state level, and I'll speak, because obviously AIR, but all of the towns, but specifically for AIR, there is no way that we can successfully and responsibly provide these services in light of the hospital closure without an influx of resources and financial support from the federal or state sources. And we'll talk about that again in a minute on the hospital. But we need to begin to shape that and begin to stress that, because we have $150,000 in the reserve fund, which can go pretty quickly, you know, and when we developed the reserve fund at the last budget, nobody knew that the hospital would be in this position. So, we are, I am, we all are, I know this board is fundamentally concerned about this, and the, our main goal is the ongoing fight to get this hospital back open, which we'll talk about in a minute. Unfortunately, at the same time, we're in a position where we need to plan for the reality of these impacts, which started at 7:00 a.m. on August 30, August 31st. So, I'll have more information for the board and for the FinCom as we begin to shape this, because it's difficult. I mean, I'm already hearing from the director of the senior center, we have one van. We're, she's already, we're looking to put together, hopefully, a plan with some support from Mark for at least a second van, because now, we used to be able to run the appointments right up the hill to go to Lemonster. You, you are all experts on, on, on where, what we're facing. Um, I would just want to point out, too, in the FY26 budget preparation on the capital side, um, that's why we're starting the initial analysis and the due diligence of the potential borrow for the senior center project, and I want to stress they need to make their recommendation to the board. The board needs to do its due diligence. But part of that is looking at the potential. I just want to stress publicly that no decision has obviously been made, but information governs decisions. So, we want everybody to realize what are the potential cost impacts and so forth of that. The other thing on the FY26 budget, I think we just need to start to keep on the burner and be mindful of, of both of the school budgets, specifically the AIR Shirley Regional School District budget. Last year, um, there was some work that was done to make it manageable for all sides. Um, the issue of the federal grant situation, we'll let, continues there. Um, also, they have some, the teachers' contract is up. Um, so, the issue of the school, and that's just a reality, I'm not, and we have contracts up on this side, too, but the, so, as we're beginning to shape the FY26 budget, there are some things in the last 45 days that are new realities, the hospital impacts, this potential school budget, and, you know, some of the larger capital. But we'll, we're just starting that process, and we have an excellent track record of solving these issues, and we also are in a strong financial position, thanks to everybody's efforts, including this board's, that we can weather storms much better than, of any of our colleagues. Um, any questions? That's my administrative report. I know it's a little long, but any, any questions on board on any administrative matters? And we're going to talk about the hospital in a second, but-
Well, this kind of goes with it a little bit. You know, you spoke how you are working with the chiefs, um, about these new costs that, you know, as you said, the temporary close into the hospital. Um, I don't want to give them any more work, but, um, you know, tracking what, in real-life numbers, what this is doing, is that being done, or because, you know, data-
Yes.
It really drives things. And if you can say, you know, we had said a million times, this is what it's going to cost, but when you actually have real-life numbers that you can, you know, put down, that helps.
It's like when Tavaris, you're spot on. So, we're doing two things. Uh, and Chief Johnson is taking the lead on this, on both of it. So, for the town, from the town area as of August 31st, unfortunately, we are tracking everything in detail, because we, as you just said, we need that to justify our case. The second thing is Chief Johnson, with District 6, which are the fire chiefs, all of the fire chiefs in our Neshova Valley region, are also going to be doing that collectively and standardized, so all of the data, so when we deal with our friends at the DPH and other places, it's all clean and on the same page. So, you are spot on. We'll make sure that data is periodically is available to the board and, and it's public record. But we're tracking all of the, um, quantitative data, and some of the qualitative data is important, too. I mean, when we said, all of us said publicly that people, and this is awful, I can't believe we're saying this, that people are going to die, or people are going to have serious issues, that needs to be recorded, and it is going to be. Now, fortunately, we don't want that to happen, but yes. And, and we will, um, continue to do that, because there's going to have to be some federal and state resources, um, in order to make it through this transition period. And, and the longer that this goes on, the bigger the impact. That's why time is of the essence. But, great, great question.
Just to kind of back up what it said, I mean, I had a resident contact me wanting to know if we could have, like, you know, do like a, a weekly posting of, you know, this is how many man-hours were spent, uh, transporting somebody. Um, also, so it goes along to exactly to what he's talking about, uh, how much, uh, is spent in man-hours and fuel transferring patients to the other hospitals and whatnot. Um, again, real data, you know?
Yeah, and, and even trying to make the intangible tangible, but, you know, just stress levels. Things like, even if the, the hard data, like you said, the quantitative, drives a lot of things, but also, as we said, that human kind of part on it, and put in there that this is, it's morale, it's, it's, it's affecting people adversely, and that's, you know, right there with everything. And I know it's tough when you're trying to, from a management standpoint, like, how much money are, you know, 1 to 10, and do you feel stressed out? It's hard to say, but, you know, if you can capture any of that somehow, anecdotally, or just those, those things, it helps, you know, that's-
Spot on, and not to speak for either of, of the chiefs, but discussions that we have had are concerns at this point, is burnout and, and, you know, personnel, you know, support and so forth, and people, the whole work-life balancefication and, and so forth. And we're not fully there yet, but these are things that we are, you're absolutely right.
Things that have to be watched-
Yeah.
So that we're not blindsided.
Yeah.
Because we've, because we've been blindsided, you know?
So, um, okay, um, before item three, so number two, as I mentioned, under appointments, um, I have two, um, that came in. I think the board has a copy. Um, two appointments I'm recommending for the cultural council. Uh, the first is Ms. Lisa Nelson of AIR, um, to, I'm recommending to be appointed, um, to a term to expire June 30th of 2025, and Ms. Carrie Murray of AIR to a term to expire June 30th of 2027. And you have their background, um, from their intent. Yes.
I'm just reading all this.
I know.
Like, who you want.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're enthusiastic, too. I like that.
Um, any questions?
No.
Very, very thorough.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the select board appoint Lisa Nelson to the cultural council with the term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and the motion passes.
And I'll make a motion that the select board appoint Carrie Murray to the cultural council with the term to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and the motion passes.
Great.
So, Mr. Chair, the number, number three, the Neshova Valley Medical Center update, and then just briefly from my perspective, and I'm, I'm sure members of the board, um, may have some other things, um, to add. So, um, unfortunately, or frustratingly, the first thing is they don't have a, a detailed substantive update yet. I wish that I did, that there was operator or so forth. Um, a couple of things from the update. Um, last week, in preparation for the unfortunate, um, both chiefs and I met with Dr. Perla up at Neshova Valley Medical Center regarding the property during the closure. So, as of Saturday, the property has closed. It is still, um, Dr. Perla is still the point person at the property for the next 30 to 45 days, and we're waiting for confirmation on which is it, because at the end of that period, then the Apollo Land Group, which owns the land and the buildings, is then responsible. Um, we talked about a whole range of concerns that the chief and the town had about the building. Um, there is going to be 24-hour security still at the, at the facility, which is good. Exterior, um, lighting, and the chiefs have the direct, um, contacts, um, for the folks, um, at the building, uh, because one of our number-one goals that we stressed is we don't want that building to deteriorate or to turn into a problem spot, and that both chiefs' departments are now already taxed with additional, that we're not going to just be, we'll do the right thing, as always, I'm not speaking for the chiefs, but we're not, this is not going to become a problem property, um, up there, especially if our intent, which we will be successful, is it's temporary. So, um, we did have, um, that meeting, um, up there. Um, two things I already stressed is the increased ambulance resources that has been communicated, both to Congresswoman Trahan on the federal level and to the state delegation and to the state, that we need to, the, the, right now, in this transition period, increased ambulance resources, whether financial or equipment or both, um, are needed. The other thing that has been conveyed by Representative Scarsdale and Senator Eldridge to the DPH is the medical building is still open, which is good, and there are doctors there. However, they relied heavily on the hospital's laboratory for a lot of their diagnostic and ancillary testing, which is now closed. Um, Dr. Perla did put together a proposal, which has been sent to the DPH, for the state, it's the least they could do, to fund a laboratory in the medical building, and there's apparently a significant unoccupied space in there that could be retrofitted into a lab, which would be an investment also for the future, meaning as the doctors stay there, because the concern is, yes, many of the doctors are staying there for now, but one of the reasons, and not, not all of them, but I would guess that one of the things that made the building attractive is it was right next to the hospital with a support lab. So, the sooner we can get a support lab in there, I think, uh, would be a win-win, not only during this period, but, you know, move, moving forward. Um, there are no updates yet that I'm aware of, or definitive updates on potential bidders or operators, um, has been indicated in some of the media and so forth. Um, you know, UMass Medical, um, is interested, um, and as are some others. I think now is, to steal from what Mayor Mazzarella said at the, at the hearing up on Devens, now is actually the critical time for us to keep the pressure and the involvement on, because you know that the feeling is, well, now the hospital is closed, it's back to school, the holiday. We need to keep, um, uh, the, the pressure and involvement on. And so, one of the things I was going to propose tonight, um, for the board to consider, is that the board authorize another formal letter, uh, to the governor and the DPH to keep, now, I know we've sent tons of letters, but to keep the, the momentum going, and, and some of the, the points would be, so now with the closure of August 31st, we remain committed and resolved more than ever to reopen, um, Neshova Valley Medical Center. Now, we'll put much stronger language, but I think one of the things is, we have to stress, we need to get this thing back open sooner than, than later at this point, and that time is of the essence. Another key point is of the proposed, it's now $700 million in taxpayer funds for the other steward hospitals. So, remember, it went from 30 million, we're now at 700 million. All of that is east of 495, yet all of the towns out here, including all of us, are footing the bill. And the state often talks about equity, and, and one of the criteria of the DPH was equity and access to healthcare. The $700 million steward bailout, which nobody's knocking those other hospitals, I mean, but not a dime of it, as right now, is west of 495. Um, that, that the town of AIR and, and AIR specifically, leading the other towns, is willing to provide the leadership and resources to solve this problem, and invite the governor and the DPH again to come to AIR, to meet with the towns, to discuss solutions and next steps. There still has to be some communication, not only formal communication with, whether it's the select board, but also with the public. And, and sooner than later, as, okay, what is the plan? What do we need to do? What can we do? As I have consistently said, not, no specific ask has been made of any of the towns that I'm aware of, and we're part of the solution, not all of the solution, but the towns can do something, and will do, do something within reason. Um, again, I, the priority at this point is securing that qualified bidder or operator. So, what do we need to, what do we need to do? And this is rhetorical more for the state, that the town remains committed to a re, this is a key point. I think the town remains committed to a reopened community hospital. We need more than just an urgent care and emergency room. And I know many of you are concerned. We've heard this phrase that's been used by the state, by the governor, about reimagined healthcare. We've heard talks about urgent care or emergency room. The whole point is we need the hospital back. And yes, emergency room and urgent care is a key piece of it, but I don't think we should settle for anything shy of that, in, in, unless it's a phased, a legitimate phased approach, where obviously we get the ER and the urgent back online with the goal of getting the whole hospital. There's too much at stake, so I think that's a point that needs to really be, be stressed, because the easy way out would be urgent care center. Um, and then, the town of AIR, um, and, as I talked about, will need supplemental resources and financial support during this critical period, and for ambulance and emergency response support in the ancillary lab at the medical building. And then, ask specifically, what is the Department of Public Health and the state doing, and provide that information formally and publicly. I think one of the concerns now is, when you hear, well, we're working on it, we're working on it, but time is of the essence. Okay, what are you doing? I mean, even the, that cone of silence has been the most problematic. So, again, I'll stop there. That's sort of the update. We will continue to keep the board and the public updated as we move forward. We've put all of the record, information related to the hospital on one central spot on the webpage. As Selectman Livingston mentioned, tonight, we'll look into adding to that about showing, you know, the data, and as we move forward, I'll talk to some folks on that. But if the board willing to authorize, uh, another, at least another letter for tonight, to keep the, and we'll, we need to continue to think of other ways to, to keep this ball moving forward. And, Mr. Chair, I'll stop there.
Absolutely. So, I, I, totally on board with this letter. Um, I'd like it to be as meaty as possible. Um, also, you know, maybe even, like, some of the impacts in bullet form. For example, um, I was at my doctor's office, uh, Harvard Medical, and, and he's got to get privileges at another hospital. It takes about six months. Um, that, you know, seniors are afraid to call 911 because they're afraid that they might take it from somebody else, which, unfortunately, that's always a constant, sometimes with seniors. Uh, but now it's even worse, you know, because of how far an ambulance will have to go, you know? Um, you know, so, there, there's those little things, um, trying to, you know, gain a rapport for our doctor- those little things, trying to, you know, gain a rapport for our doctors' offices with the other hospitals and everything, and try to navigate, because there's, I guess, no emergency application they can fill out, you know? I mean, they were thrust into this situation too. So, you know, that, that also, as far as the equity of healthcare, is where we're going to be lacking, because, you know, if our doctors don't have privileges and we're all trying to navigate the, the new reality and everything, whose health is being impacted? So somebody went up to the hospital, because I guess they never got a phone call to say, the hospital was closed, they go up, the building's closed, they go to the doctor's office, and like, what do you mean? Well, now where do I go? As they're scrambling to find a new place for them to run a test. Again, that falls onto the, this whole equity. This reimagining, little scary that we're not being included in this conversation, because, I mean, you know, what exactly are you reimagining? Because I know we're not in a century that we can do this in the way that I would reimagine it at. So what are they thinking? And why aren't we being included in the conversation? And I think that that kind of needs to be added. And, and the fact that, again, we have no public transportation. So, you know, as somebody having a problem getting from like Lunar Bear to Harvard, what about from Lunar Bear to Emerson?
Yep.
You know? So this whole thing, you know, the cone of silence, I, I saw an interview Congresswoman Trahan did, nothing. I mean, it was, I mean, wow. It wasn't even good political nothing. It was like, wow, that was really nothing, you know? And to be honest, our governor spent more time with Julia Louis-Dreyfus ice cream and Senator Warren campaigning than she did for all argus from what she's shown us on this issue, because there's no record of her showing us that she was working on this issue, you know? So those are just other little things, you know, that are kind of the impact. And it's every day, there's going to be, you know, we think we're, we got it here, oh, wait, you know, I went over here, there was this cobweb and it opened a door, and now we're, now we're over here. And, you know, this whole mess is just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. Because, and, and also because of this rush job to close this facility, you know? It wasn't even done in a logical manner. Toys R Us would not have done this, you know? But a hospital would, oh, just shut the door, you know? It just, so.
I do like what you mentioned in the letter too, pushing them for action items, you know, what are you doing? Hammer on that over and over again, because, again, in experience, that's what you need, is, is to keep on saying, what are you doing? I want some kind of plan that you're going to stick to, because we haven't got anything. It's.
It's the worst part.
Yes. Yeah, it's just, you know, stand by. And we can't. So I, and I think that's one of my biggest frustrations in all this, is we keep on asking for a plan, and it just keeps on not being a plan.
And you know what's also so insulting, is that this town has never really gone to the state and said, we need, we need, we need, we need, we need. We really haven't. I mean, of course, we've, we've asked our, hey, you know, can we have our share and everything, but we really have not bothered anybody in far as, this is what we need. And then the one time we do, it's like a door got slammed in our face. I'm not even sure if the door got slammed. I'm not even sure there was a door there. I think there was a complete wall, you know? And, and to not, and I, and I said this before, bad leadership, to not even come out and, and even weakly saying, hey, look, we tried this, that didn't work, so we're going to try this. Or, you know, hey, you know, you're not forgotten. Nothing. Zilch. Not. Just.
Yeah. And as Pauline pointed out a few days ago, there needed to be a med flight, which, you know, hey, wish we had a nice helipad that, you know, was at a medical facility.
Somewhere in town?
It landed at the high school, which, hey, you know, I mean, it's great that someone in, in need got, got the, you know, med flight and they could land there, but it's, that's not what the high school field's for. I mean, that's why we have that helipad. And, and that was one of my thoughts all, on this, was losing that. And the fact they're just going to decommission or, you know, just say, yeah, 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 that's, that's closed now. You know, I started thinking, what if the high school isn't available? What if there's some people and they have to clear the, you know, it's just, it's all those things that you said, you just kind of keep on going down these weird little hallways.
Yeah, exactly.
And you open the door, like, oh, that's not good, you know?
Yeah, you think, oh, I cleared that room. Oh, gosh, darn it, look at that. Yeah.
And those are the things, like I said, it'd be excellent if we could capture, you know? There's these weird little offshoots of an offshoot that no one ever thought about. You know, we got 98% going forward saying, these are going to be the huge impacts. It's all these small ones that.
So Mr. Chair, respectfully, if the board wants to authorize the letter, it'll be from the board.
Yes.
I would, and I took notes as well, I will put together a draft for the board and for, for each of you to see and offer any input, and then from that consensus, issue that letter for signature by the, the board.
Absolutely.
Just one of the things, we can't get her to come to us, okay? Just infuriating. We offered her ice cream and everything, from the cottage, so, you know, it's going to be good. What if we requested a man?
Yes. To your point, I think that should be in what I'm envisioning for the letter, and I'll defer to the board using your point about the bullets, because I'm a firm believer of the next steps. We, we put that request in there.
If you can't come to us, we'll come to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, I get to the state house.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah, just that, because the board, it's the board's lettering, it'll be authorizing it.
So I'll take a motion on that?
I'm trying to think of, I make a motion for the Select Board to write a letter to the governor regarding the reopening of Neshoba Valley Medical Center.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Letter is authorized.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chair, and members of the board through you, I'd ask Chuck Schultz, the facilities director, to come up to the table for items number four and five, which sort of go together. So item four, and let me pass this out, I sent to the board earlier, is a revised memo. Item, item four is, actually, before I, I'm getting ahead of myself, we have two ARPA proposals for your consideration. In, upon.
I'm really scared.
Upon appro, no, upon approval, upon approval of both of these, the town will have committed all of its ARPA funds. The first one is a memo you have in your packet, so this is under number four. It's under my, it's from, the Department of Public Works is requesting that the board authorize up to $8,700 from ARPA funds for the installation of outdoor lighting at the Spectacle Pond Water Treatment Facility. The work would include three outdoor lights with all associated conduits and hangars. As you can see in the memo from the DPW Director and the Water and Sewer Superintendent, the Spectacle Pond Drinking Water Facility is in a remote location of air with no outside lighting. It is very pleasant down there in the daytime, very natural.
Yeah.
But at night, and staff gets called out there and so forth, and the town just spent a considerable amount of funds on constructing the plant. So we felt that this was a reasonable request for the ARPA funds, a small one, for your consideration.
Just, I had one question on these. These aren't lights that would be on all the time, right? This would only be in.
Correct. They'd be activated when it gets dark. Yeah.
I get to see it in the neighbors.
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions on the light request?
No.
It's pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the allocation of the $8,700 of ARPA funds for the installation of outdoor lighting at the Spectacle Pond Water Treatment Facility.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
All right. Thank you. And now, so I want to ask through the chair, Chuck is going to do two brief presentations. The first one is for an ARPA request, which would be for 76, right, 76,000? 70,244 for the total upgrade of the first floor meeting room. And then his second presentation is an update in the, in the plan to submit a proposal through Capitol for the Great Hall improvements. The challenge we have is that the, this room, we have the ARPA funding to do completely, which this room needs desperately on multiple levels, as we've all witnessed. Upstairs, we don't have enough money, even with the remaining ARPA, to do upstairs, but through the Capitol, and, and Chuck did an amazing job, in my opinion, in turning what was the super Cadillac of a $900,000 proposal down to 100 and something. So with that, the first one is the ARPA proposal for the first floor meeting room upgrade in the amount of $7,244. And I'll turn it over to Chuck for the presentation and his copy.
All right. So here we go. First floor meeting room media upgrades. All right. So to start with, we'll start with the monopad, Windows 7, almost 10 years old now. Zoom equipment purchased. It's, it's an, it's an older version. Zoom. So Zoom equipment we purchased during the thick of COVID. It was just a temporary solution. Apex equipment is, been here for about 10 years, other than these microphones you see on the table. So the goal of all this is to combine it all. We would have the same platform if you're on Zoom, if you're on your local broadcasting, or you're here in room, watching the events or at the meetings. It would all come off the same microphones, same cameras, same speakers. So up on the wall, where we have the monopad now, there'd be two 75-inch screens. One could do your Zoom stuff, one could do your presentation, so you can see everything that's going on. On the table itself, right now, to have a presentation, we gotta do what Carly's doing, is give it to her prior, have her upload it to everything. So what we have is a Bluetooth puck here, that you can plug your laptop right into, that's a built-in firewall, that'll keep their stuff safe from our stuff and not corrupt our system by having a laptop plugged into it. Plus, it would have the ability to use Mac computers as well as PC computers. On the table itself, also, we would have 11-inch touchscreen that would be able to control all the Zoom meetings, kind of everything that's going on from the table itself. On each wall, we would have speak microphones for the crowd, so that when the crowd's talking, the microphones can get them good. We're replacing the cameras and speakers around the room, and then we're going to do a 75-inch on the back wall here with a better clarity, so everyone can see it better. And then we're going to have four looped-in hearing aids for the crowd people, folks. We talked about doing a, a speaker or something for people to hear in the back, but they're worried about cross sound and it just.
Reverberation always happens, yeah.
Getting really funky. So the solution was four microphone hearing aid type devices. And then additionally, there, it's going to be a microphone, so if there was like a special event, we wanted crowd to stand up and talk into a microphone, so that, that's better than the wall mics that we'll have just on a regular basis. There'll be a special event microphone. And the big thing of all this is the equipment's starting to get very out of date and very old. It's got to have, happen sooner than later, replacing a lot of this stuff. It's better to do it all at once and have it all communicate together, work together, and be a good platform for everyone to be on either Zoom or local broadcasting or here. You get the same, same quality anywhere you go. To help keep labor costs down, usually when we do projects like this, it'll be like 50/50, 50% equipment, 50% labor, but on this one, we're more about 70/30. I'm going to try to do as much in-house, in-house work as possible with our electrician to run the wiring, to conceal things, to hide everything, to try to keep costs down, because I understand it's a large cost to begin with. So just a quick view, this is the touchpad that I was speaking of real quick. This is what the cameras will look like. Additionally, we would be upgrading all the Apex local broadcasting equipment, so there'll be new controllers for the cameras, all new software, all new hardware in the closet back there for them to control everything. It'll be nice and new. Kind of went over all the other stuff already. And I did kind of a quick picture with the 75-inch.
Would a 75-inch actually fit right there?
Yeah, so they measured it. We got four feet from the wall where that, four feet where we got for space, and that's why they're doing two of them. They'd rather have done like an 85, but we didn't have the height to do one larger one. So that's what the idea of going side by side was, because of that restriction we had there.
So I have the big frame, like this has, you know.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we wouldn't have the speaker, because the speakers would be built into the overall system. So it would just be the two monitors up there, then we would have the PC hidden behind it. We have a monopad now, so the PC, the computer's built into it. How many times do we actually use the touchscreen nowadays? You know, at any of these meetings, I'm sure you guys never really go up there and touch it, or there's kind of no.
Seen once in like five years.
Yeah, there's really no.
I remember once, years ago, when we first got it, and somebody's tried dialing in, and we were all scared.
It was amazing technology. Yeah, when it first came, when it came out, it's amazing technology, and it was top, top of anything you can get. It's just 10 years about passed, and technology's changed so drastically that now it's just big bulky displays and then a PC hidden behind, and you control everything from a wireless device, you know, on your tabletop or something. So then we'll go into the budget. So we got, so the equipment alone, $42,700. The wiring with our local electrician and myself, I'm not, gee, that sounded wrong. The wiring costs, electrical costs are $8,900 for our electrician, and then $25,000 for the install, the programming, everything that takes to get it working. And then in-house is my end of things. I'm going to try to do some trenching, the finish work, and then renovating the closet back there and getting rid of a lot of the old stuff that's just lingering around, get buried a little more space to sit in there comfortably. It's kind of cramped in there, you know, and you got a lot. So the idea is in there to put a new rack, put it just all, just modern equipment in there and get everything nice and neat. You know, I just want to stress, you know, that if we do move forward this project, it's new technology. There's going to be a glitch here or there, but we're, me and Carly are going to be here to teach everyone, try to get through those first learning curves, but I feel strongly after we get through the first couple glitches, issue here, issue there, it'll be a great product for the town folks to have. And.
SOP.
Yeah.
You know, like just, just a white sheet that kind of steps you through all this stuff, because I just joined, I didn't know I did that was a touchscreen.
There was like a little tutorial there, you know? Just looking at.
Oh, so that's.
You're one of those who likes to touch things.
Oh, yeah. So actually, that, on the sheet there, it's because the monopad itself, the USB ports are broken. Me and Carly wrestled with it for a couple of weeks, trying to figure out why we couldn't get this camera to work right. And the last thing you would ever think of, the most simplest thing was, is the US port was broken.
You'd never think of the simple thing.
No, unfortunately, we went from the most extreme to the simplest instead of, that was my fault. But, yeah, that's why we have that up there.
And so, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In the memo you have, the, the request is for authorization of $70,244 for ARPA. And then, as Chuck has outlined, to get the total cost of the project to 76,897, 6,653 is coming from the facilities budget. So we would be looking respectfully for authorization up to $70,244. And that with the lights that the board just authorized is all of the And that with the lights that the board just authorized is all of the town's ARPA money is committed.
God, finally. Any other questions on this proposal?
Well, I gotta say, when I first looked at it, the lighting, you might want to look at the lighting in here too, because I read it wrong, and I almost, that's why I was looking at you going, "No."
I'm talking about the next thing we're gonna talk about.
I was, I was like, "Well, I can't have a heart attack, because it takes too long to get there." You know, but yeah, so then I was like, "Oh, good, I read it wrong." So, I got a quick question. So, we had already authorized, do we already authorize the $67,000 on August 24th?
I'm sorry, I made the request on August 24th to Robert of the $67,000.
Oh, it was only to him.
I apologize.
He doesn't count.
I have no authority.
I'm like, "I don't remember that," but you know, there was a lot going on in August. So, okay, because that's, I was trying to think of like, how are we writing the motion? So, now I get it, okay. No, this sounds great. It sounds great. And once I've read it right, I'm, yeah. So, we have the lighting in here. It's always, I always thought it's been terrible, so...
Chris, any other questions?
No, but I think that's, it needs it.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't, yeah. Definitely, especially, you hear it all the time from people in town that say, you know, "I couldn't hear," or the broadcast on Channel 8 didn't, or, you know, something that comes up a lot.
Right. Ironically, though, like when we have the Devon's Jurisdiction Meeting, everybody who meets here, they're like, "Oh, man, you got the best meeting room anywhere." So, you know, all a matter of perspective. So, a quick question. All right, so if we authorize the money tomorrow, when you starting and when you finishing?
All right, so I talked to him about that. It's their busy time, because school's starting. I guess they do a lot of work with schools and stuff, but he does believe, you know, a four- to six-week lead time on getting the project started. The project's gonna be a one-week project from start to finish, and this room would be very unusable during that one week, because it's gonna be a madhouse running wires and stuff. But one week to get the work done, once we get it done, and hopefully, within a month to a month and a half, we could start the work.
So, maybe by the end of the year?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. You already know, you already know.
Robert's already quizzed me on that one. Yeah, I feel pretty good about it.
So, four to six weeks lead time?
To do the install. And then, we're gonna, again, we're gonna get the glitches out, we're gonna do lots of training. Part of this, if we end up going with the company we're proposing, is we'll have a service maintenance contract on the equipment. And we won't do it forever, but for the first year or two, with that, they come out once or twice a year, depending on which level of contract you pick. They check all the equipment, they do any training or answer any questions they may have. And then, they're on call within four or eight hours, depending on the service contract you pick, for them to come out and fix any equipment or replace equipment until they get you new equipment.
That sounds like a good idea.
All right.
All right.
I would take a motion.
Love it.
Glad to.
Love, love, love it.
All right, so it's $70,244, okay. I would like to make a motion for the expenditure of $70,244 from the ARPA funds for the first floor meeting room project.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and it's approved.
No more ARPA funds.
Well, you jinxed it.
I know, this one's gonna go back.
And then, we're gonna come back to the next meeting, and it'll be like, "Nice problem to have, you know, we're giving back this amount of money."
I think it's a great use of it, though.
And so, the next presentation will be for upstairs. And just again, want to stress, Chuck will be formally submitting this to the Capitol Planning Committee to go through the Capitol planning process. But wanted to update the board on this, because this is also extremely important. And I, in my opinion, I think Chuck did an excellent job since we last met, taking the almost million-dollar proposal to come up with what we believe is a solution and progress for the Great Hall. So, not looking for any vote tonight, but wanted to give an update. So, Chuck?
Absolutely. So, the, in your guys' black books I put together, it has a lot more detailed information on everything.
This is amazing.
The big scope of things is, Robert just alluded to...
Oh, you really gave black books, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody else needs to step it up, okay?
There's my name on it.
I know, I know.
My computer wasn't working, I had to handwrite it, I'm sorry. All right, so it's about $700,000 we had proposed, this Cadillac of audiovisual.
No, it was the BMW, the Porsche, James Bond's car.
The whole nine yards. So, since then, I've been working with the same company, and we've brought it back a bit to about $120,000 for the audiovisual equipment. What that will include is six speakers around the room, up to 10 presenter mics, crowd mics, everything you could possibly need to hold a great presentation. Additionally, we wanted to do a drop-down screen. We wouldn't be able to, in this proposal, afford to be able to have the monitor, the projector actually like drop down, like we were talking about before. What we'd do is a rolly cart, then on the floor, we'd have a place to plug it into that connected to what we needed to connect into. And then, once we're done with the projector, we'd just roll it out of the way and put it in storage. So, the projector screen is still part of it, all the audiovisual, acoustical paneling. What we're gonna do is on the interior walls only. We're gonna stay away from the exterior walls, that we have all these issues 150-year-old building with. And we're gonna do some paneling behind the two double doors when you first walk in the room, and then where the stage is on the back wall there. And then, we're gonna look into some kind of carpeting that we can possibly roll in or roll out, some kind of solution to help with the floor dampening. As the guy, the fellow that we had here talked about, we want to soften the room as much as possible. That's gonna help with the noise and the reverberation. And then, the last part on the acoustical part, soundproofing, we're looking into panels possibly. So, like if we had an event, like we did with the Senator, behind this last set of seats, we could put some paneling behind there, just acoustical paneling that would help with the noise and kind of block it into where we want it to be in. Also, two part of this project would be in that cubicle space that we renovated up in the Great Hall. It would, we have a Zoom room for about $16,000 that give us a 75-inch screen, all the audiovisual equipment that you could host a meeting similar to down here. Additionally, all the equipment that we're proposing, Apex or local broadcasting, would be able to plug directly into it and get their feed from our speakers, our microphones, our cameras. Also, furniture, replacing the chairs. I'm sure you guys have been up to the chairs, it's starting to get pretty beat up and torn up. They're just, they're almost 20 years old now. And then, we're talking about getting a couple tables that if we did have a meeting or something, that we would have those flipped-down wooden nice tables that we could set up and host an event with. There's some documentation in the books about what it would look like and stuff. But I just wanted to talk about it, and so, wrap all that together, $179,000.
Not bad.
But I do...
That is a big reduction.
And I have to, like, we would, in-house, would be handling the acoustic panels for this price. We would be mounting the speakers. We're gonna have our local electrician run the wiring. It would probably be more like $250,000 to $300,000. I know it sounds crazy, if we put it out to Ben, had a project manager, we paid the overhead, a company would take the labor cost of prevailing wage. We're trying to eliminate as much as possible. 120 of the proposed 179 is equipment pretty much only. So, it's a pretty good piece of the chunk of it's literally the equipment that we're gonna be purchasing of the overall price. But yeah, if you guys have any questions or anything.
Where, where will the screen be?
So, it would be where the post-picture of, I believe it's Dr. Air's...
Yes, that's Dr. Air.
Dr. Air's picture would be, it would be up top there.
Okay.
We mount it up there, and then we would have either a pull-down or a button or a switch that you could press to drop it down. So, it would just lower, go up and down as you needed. So, it would be kind of tucked away up top there, but then, when you need it, you could press and pull it down.
And then, how about for like, so my one issue at our meeting with the Senator and Representative Senator was that the screen for Zoom was here, so I kept having to rely like on Carly to see if anybody was there. So, it just wasn't ideal.
So, two things. One, everything off the projector screen would be our feed to like the local broadcasting and stuff. But we would still, it's very inexpensive to put a 55-inch, 60-inch screen on a rolly cart and be able to add that to this whole project and give us like a... So, you guys can see it and no one else can. We kind of did it during a town meeting when it was COVID, and we had that room.
Oh, yeah.
Remember we had that spare room, and then we put a monitor that you guys could see the people in? It'd be something similar to that, that we definitely do.
Yeah, easy screen mirroring. That, yeah, if you have overflow and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing is...
Oh, yeah, I remember hearing you.
The acoustics.
You know, like, I mean, that's, that's the big thing in that role.
And, you know, in this proposal, like the original proposal, like at almost a quarter million, three quarters of a million dollars, we were gonna be paneling everything. And we spent a good amount of money having a professional come out and test it and stuff. We're not proposing to put that much acoustical paneling up for a couple of reasons. One, I'm really worried about water getting in and destroying them. It's a really old building. We just have a lot of quirky issues with this building being 150 years old.
It's not that old.
Yeah. But we're gonna put some paneling up to try to help as much, soften the room as much as possible that we can. But to have the audiovisual equipment, when we had that Senator meeting with you guys did up there, like, it would have been awesome to have. Like, you know, I went to the local AV store that weekend to go buy those speakers and micro, the microphones that you guys had on the table. And I wish we had a more professional setup to offer you guys to use.
The other problem is, a lot of people don't know how to talk in a microphone. They think that their mouth needs to be right on it, so then you're like, "Roar, roar." You know, so, which...
The microphone is here and there.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, you know, when somebody's in front of a microphone, they really should kind of just like raise their voice just a little bit, like you're trying to talk to your significant other who all of a sudden gets deaf when you've tried to call them, you know what I'm saying? That's the visual, and you're like, "Oh, that's the voice." Yes, that's the level I need to be at when you're in front of the microphone. Because if you whisper in a microphone, it's gonna pick up, it's just gonna whisper, you know?
Screaming, I'm gonna sound horrible.
I'm usually, everyone tells me, "Get close," and I'm like, "No, because I talk loud."
I like the proposal.
I do, I love the presentation.
Yes, that's...
I'm telling you, you gotta step up.
Maybe have one of these for every person at town meeting, or...
No, I don't think we can afford that, but I can offer it to anyone who wants.
Yeah, no, it's great.
And yeah, if you guys had any other thoughts before we get to Capitol season and let me and Robert know, and we can incorporate them into the proposal. And yeah, we'll just try to get it done, do the best we can. Audiovisual system, so this is very fascinating to me.
Yeah, good, good.
Oh, this is great.
All right, guys, thank you so much, thank you for having me.
Have a good one.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions from the board, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Absolutely. Any questions for Robert? All right. Next item on the agenda is the new business Select Board member questions, which there weren't any in the packet, any...
I thought of something today, and it's just, you know, coming up, I don't, we have, the date hasn't been set, and that's fine, but coming up is gonna be the tax classification hearing. So, you know, we always have like a little presentation. I think it would be nice if like in the presentation, they could say, you know, what has, like, things that had gotten approved at town meeting, for example, 71 Sandy Pond Road, that does not affect your taxes. So, this is, this is the items that affected, this is the items that didn't affect it, because I guess there were some people that are confused.
Yep.
So, it was our federal funds came out of our taxes that we all paid. Wisconsin helped pay for it, but it did not have come out of our local tax funds, so...
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
And then, if there's nothing else, I will...
We have no minutes to...
No, I know.
I didn't see it on the agenda, I just...
Yes, as I said, so the next meeting will have two sets.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so we'll have the ones from the special meeting on the August 6th, and then the ones from the 20th, which I took, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So much has happened in the past month.
And with that?
And with that, Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and we are adjourned.